At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to give a tidbit of history for starting our 250th anniversary. For your information, in August of 1773, the contract went out to build a goal, G-O-A-L, and a courthouse. The goal, of course, was the jail. The jail is what was later known as the old KD hospital down there on King Street. And the goal was finished in December of 1774. However, the courthouse wasn't finished for several years because the gentleman in building it came back in 1775 and he needed some additional money, and the money was a little short. And then the revolution broke out, and William Smith, who was the contractor, went off to fight the revolution. So there was a couple of years there that things didn't happen. So that's how we started off, fellas. And I just thought we'd like to know.
And the county's still growing today?
Yes, and we're still doing contracts. I wonder if we would allow them to do two contracts for the goal and the courthouse all at one time. I don't know, I don't think we would have done that.
It's interesting, though, you know, if you look at most seats that are out there, the jails were always built before the courthouses.
Right. They must have needed them. Because the previous drawings I have was where the library is now, they actually had where the stocks were. They had a drawing where they had placed the stocks, and the original location was supposed to be there for the jail. But evidently, they just couldn't, it didn't work out. So it ended up down on the east corner of Spring Street.
Is the jail incorporated into KD Hospital?
No, no, it's the old stone building.
It is?
It's the old stone building that was.
The old, isn't that the power plant or the heat plant that actually heated the boiler plant?
I was always told that was the old KD hospital.
It was the old KD hospital, and before that, it was the jail. And there's a little doorway to the left of that. And that, according to some documents I found, was the county clerk's office. So because they had to have a place to meet when they didn't have a location. So that's the setup. So at this time, as the person handling the organization meeting, I'd like to open the floor for election of president.
I'd like to nominate Doug Copenhaver for president for your term.
I have an initial.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Will Mr. Copenhaver please come forward? Raise your right hand. I solemnly swear
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of West Virginia.
And the Constitution of the state of West Virginia.
And that I will faithfully discharge
faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of president
The duties of the office of president.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Let me go. Congratulations. Wait a minute. Here, wait a minute. Here, that's the pen that was here. Here's the pen I brought. That was the pen that was on the desk.
Seven, I think.
Yeah. I had checked the pen out, and that was the one that was laying on the desk.
Really? Yes. He would probably win.
Yeah, he probably would.
How many years have you been president?
Seven, isn't it? Six or seven, yes.
At this time, I would open the floor for nominations for vice president.
I have a court, I would be honored to nominate Jim Whitaker as the vice president coming year, 2022.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, Mr. Whitaker, would you please step forward? Raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of West Virginia
And the Constitution of the state of West Virginia.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties
And that I will faithfully discharge
Of the office of vice president
Of the office of vice president.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Let me go.
Thank you. Any items from the public right now? It looks like it should work out. Now I got it back. All right. Since there is no item from the public, I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, if there's no amendments or modifications to the agenda move, we prove it as presented.
All right. I have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries purchase order. Any questions or concerns on that?
Some, some. All of them. Yes, sir. The sheriff had a Christmas banquet, must have been pretty horrible, and had a photographer, a contractor photographer, come in to take some photographs.
You got a moment for it?
I questioned it also, but he submitted it in the voice, so as an elected official, that's elected official to elected official.
I think it, I mean, I don't have no serious problems with it, records and memories itself, but I mean, whatever you all want to do. I think that.
Got some money in the budget?
Yes, sir.
I think it's
You're holding the charge.
You know, I did not see that in the, I didn't recognize it in the, but at the same time, I would hope that that event helps build morale within that agency and continues to pay off.
Yeah, I have no idea what he's doing with it. In the result of the photography, I don't know, did he put it in a book, you know?
I know that the forfeiture money can be used for something like that, but only, you know, for promotion of the task force and things. you know, for promotion of the task force and things. For what he has collected back and the work that he's done, I think it's appropriate.
And it is being paid throughout the general fund.
Yeah. All right, any other concerns? All right. No internal budget revisions. We have some change in status. Change in status received from Allen Davis County Administrator for Mike Lang. He is receiving a salary increase for his 10-year longevity step. His salary will be going from 79,695 to 87,664 effective January 12, 2022. We have a letter of resignation received from the day report center for Candace Bograne effective December 22, 2021. Letter of resignation received from the prosecuting attorney's office for Elizabeth Costello effective January 3, 2022. Letter of resignation received from the day report center for Greg Orlando effective December 30, 2021. Letter of resignation received from central dispatch for Jeremy Klein effective January 2, 2022. Letter of resignation received from the day report center for Nicole Prentice effective January 3, 2022. So Tim still has turnover.
Yes, sir. Ian, I've talked about that. We've addressed, addressed a couple of things that need to be tweaked a little bit. So, and you'll see most of it is in the area of peer recovery, which is, so we're trying to work through that.
Are they leaving for better jobs and better?
Some are leaving for better jobs, some are leaving for some, some personal issues.
And then we lost somebody, the gentleman in central dispatch? Is that the new one? One of the new ones?
He has been here about a year, yeah.
Right. So all the training and gone. All right, any other concerns or interest in the change of status? We have approval minutes for December 16, 2021. Everyone was present. Any changes or corrections on those? December 23, 2021, everyone was present for that one. Any changes or corrections for those? Moving on to the county council calendars. We- We'll be here next Thursday on the 13th at normal time at 9:30. We'll be off for, on the 17th for the celebration of Martin Luther King. And on the boards and commissions, we have nothing this week. And we have on Monday, 2:00 PM, L.A.P.C., 4:00 PM, Eastern Panel, Trans Authority, 5:00 PM, Water District, 6:00 PM, Airport Authority, 6:00 PM, Farmland Protection, Tuesday, the 11th at 2:00 PM, Central Dispatch, Wednesday, the 12th, 9:30 AM, Development Authority, 6:00 PM, Roundhouse Authority, and Thursday, the 13th, at 6:30 is the Fire Board. Any changes or corrections to boards and commissions?
Mr. President, if I may, just a reminder to the council that next Thursday, the 13th, in the morning, we will begin budget hearings. We were scheduling budgets as, hearings as the budgets are being submitted. Also, on January 27, in the afternoon, that will be all day we need, we'll set as the Board of Equalization and Review. As you know, you must convene as the Board of Equalization and Review no later than February 1st. And you'll see that carries, carry forward, carries forward into the month of February. The week of January 31st, which includes Tuesday, February 1st, and Thursday, February 3rd, Council President Copenhever and Council Vice President Whittaker have both indicated that they will not be here those days. So just wanted to make sure that the other three, barring illness, the other three of you will, will be here. And then also on the 24th of February, Mr. Whittaker, Councilperson Whittaker has a W.B. Court on board and he will not be here. But just keep in the back of your mind, the first and the third will be the three remaining council people for us.
Well, we'll try to make it right by-
What, what date are you saying?
The February 1st and February 3rd.
I think I can do that.
Thank you. That's all.
All right, we have a bond release for Pebble Ridge, Section 5, Phase 3D, Final Plat, BCP File Number 2011-329, tied to BCP File Number 63-04, LOC number is 360, and the one that's holding the bond is Grant County Bank. Any questions or concerns why Doug's here holding that one?
So that's saying final, so that's the, there's no percentage or anything held after this at point? And so everything is?
That's correct. So the HLA, the HLA has transferred all their property. This is a complete full return of bond. They're not-
Okay.
Whatever happened to the road out there that never got final cap on it because of the bankruptcy in that one phase? There was nothing that could be done about that. Right. I tried to push that here, but- Okay. It, it was a different LOC. The LLC went under. They came back even though the players may have been similar in round two. Technically, it was a different LLC. I, you know, tried to encourage, motivate, if you will. All right. Okay, all right. Then we'll talk about that one, Doug. Don't get, I think I'm familiar with it. All right, need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
You okay with that bond release?
Yeah, I mean, I, my question is, is if the, the last phase, all of that, should have been even allowed to continue on without some means to finalize the first section? You know?
I'm not sure.
There's, there's no motivation to finalize it at this point, but before you develop more, there's motivation.
I think there's a bond issue on that one, but we'll, so you want to table or you want to move forward?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, what is, what is legal counsel's thought on it? You know, is there any recourse there or is it something that?
I don't think you can hold up this one because it's a different phase. It's something, I'm not familiar with what the action is going to be.
Should we table it and let him look at it?
Just table it and put it back on the agenda for next week. I'm pretty sure, I'm, I'm pretty familiar with a little bit about that. I know there were several attempts to try to do something. We'll get together real quick after the meeting. All right, so we're going to table that, just let, Tracy, let Doug know that we're going to table that until next week.
May modify my motion.
Yeah, let's, let's pull, let's go get a motion to pull the bond release from Pebble Ridge and table it until next week, I should say.
So moved.
Yeah. Motion made, second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. All right, so now entertain a motion on the remainder of the consent agenda.
So moved to approve the consent agenda, the remainder.
All right, have a motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion on that? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Hess is out of his office today, so Mr. Davis, I guess you can present the five personal property tax exoneration due to office error.
Yes, sir. You'll find in your package, five personal properties, exoneration requests, all for office error. They're pretty self-explanatory. The total value of the exonerations is $677.24.
So it says, it says, obviously, this is office error and it says, not that you're going to be able to answer this question, but it says the mobile home was sold before 7/1/2020 according to the bill of sale. So does that mean that bill of sale was presented to the assessor's office beforehand or afterhand? And now they're, now they're saying it is office error. I mean, if it was presented afterhand, after the bill was generated, then doesn't it become taxpayer?
It would be taxpayer and because I'm not familiar with, with that, I couldn't answer your question.
All right, so we want to table it till next week then?
What do you think?
Looking ahead, so I'm, I'm not ever going to go against you, Mr. Dalier.
Well, I'm just, I mean, it's just-
We can table the total exoneration until next week because it's not like we're refunding them, like, it's a credit against fee bill.
Right. All right, so that's entertaining motion to table the exoneration until next week?
So moved.
All right, have a motion on the floor, we have a second. Second, any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Not trying to kick the can down the road, you know?
No.
But you are.
Well, I'll be right, man. All right, so we have an application for Dirk Stansberry for the Burke County Public Service Sir, Stormwater District. Is that okay to put him in for interview? Nobody's complaining, so I guess so. All right, Tracy. Schedule him up for an interview, please. All right, next on our agenda is our own Will Lawrence, our fiduciary supervisor.
Mr. President, board meeting reports.
Well, it's, it skipped over that, I'm sorry, Will. I'll keep you on the back burner. I skipped right over board meeting reports. I, I skipped over it because it was Christmas week, so I'm thinking everybody doesn't have anything to report on. Mr. Barnhart.
Well, just so happens, I don't have anything to report on.
Mr. Dalier.
Well-
You're going to make the pay, aren't you?
Uh, I-
You're going to talk about your Christmas meetings.
I, I did have a nice holiday.
Yeah.
Yeah. Of course, you know, it's, it's with all of the, all the issues with, that we're dealing with, with COVID now and everybody having that right now, seems like it's a lot going on, but I think the, I think the death rate from, is nothing like we seen in the very beginning, which is really good.
Right.
But, no, I don't have anything to say.
Mr. Whittaker.
No meetings here.
Mr. Goakhan.
Yes, sir. Plan A Commission meeting one night. I had three public hearings. The rest of, the rest of the meeting was fairly normal. Nothing really outstanding there. I was on the sewer board last night. Should be able to get a draft of the new ordinance by January 30th.
The storm water?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, yeah, with the storm water. As far as the sewer projects are moving along, the Jerrystown Pump Station came to a halt because the whole crew got COVID, so they've all been off.
That's right there at the school.
Yes, sir. They're going to abandon that plant and pump station in, I guess, the room.
So, so basically, so, well, so that pump station will pump into like Stone Lake somewhere or something?
They'll certainly go Gold Miller Road and tie into that main that came across from Bentwood-
Okay.
-to service Spring Hills, Spring Dale.
Right, right, right.
So that's where it's going to tie and be a forced main going up-
Gold Mill.
Gold Miller Road.
Okay. Now those houses can tap onto it as long as they have an injection.
Right.
E1.
Check that.
Checks that.
Roseville Cemetery upgrade with their sewer line there is, I think they actually have that pipe on hand to be able to do that. And there's a project on Route 11 North that they're, they had to bore the road to get under, I think it's-
Falling Waters Campsite.
Yes, yes, yeah, that's where it's at. They made one into-
Is it the one just past Falling Waters Campsite? That, that townhouse?
To the south side. It's right there between the campsites and the, and the townhouses, not, not the Delauter.
Oh, so it is.
But it will service, it does come from Delauter down to there and across the road.
Right, okay.
And that will feed the development that's going to be going on between Route 11 and E1. I think it's it.
Thank you, sir. I don't have anything to report on at this time.
We figured that out already.
That's why I skipped over. All right, now, next on our agenda is Will Lawrence's fiduciary supervisor, estate count for the month of January, still 28. Will?
It is council.
All right. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you, Will.
Getting right to it, council. The estate of Rebecca Lynn Barrett, the estate of Janina B. Beavers, the estate of Phyllis Maxine Bowers, the estate of Monte Dale Boyer Jr., the estate of Cecilia Brown, the estate of Genevieve Mae Brown, the estate of Ronald W. Bryant, the estate of Carolyn Elizabeth Collard, the estate of Alan William Folk, the estate of Donald Morris Garmer, the estate of Betty Jane Good, the estate of Richard Billargood, the estate of Tommy E. Hall, the estate of Earl Wayne Hoff, the estate of Dennis E. Hutzler, the estate of Louis Francis Kanzler, the estate of Carl Rupert King, the estate of Judith Ann Laidlow, the estate of Stephen James Moore, the estate of Donald L. Poole Sr., the estate of William F. Riggelman, the estate of Ronald Gilbert Sein, the estate of Stacy Lynn Stalbs, the estate of Norman Ruber Stokes II, the estate of Nancy Lynn Warner, the estate of Kristen Brooke Wideman, the estate of Delbert William Perry Keller, and the estate of Marvin Joseph Wilton.
All right, anybody have any questions for Will? All right, if not, entertain a motion to approve the 28 estate accounts for the month of January.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion on the floor and a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
There is one additional thing, council. It's not on your agenda. It's mainly signing an order we already discussed. It's the order, the proposed order finally came through on it. It was regarding the estate period Y. This was, if you recall, the October 7th meeting where fiduciary commissioner Hill came up and presented. The council formalized his findings and this order is just an integration of that.
Okay, and you, okay, Will?
Yeah, it's inside. Yeah.
Okay. Will we date it or you want to date it?
Uh, we can date. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, council.
All right, we're running ahead of schedule a little bit. Mr. Davis, you want to go ahead and do some of your stuff?
Yes, sir. As you know, the first Thursday of the new calendar year is always the time to set your meeting schedule, discuss board and committee assignments, and then also provide you with the schedule of your radio appearances for the calendar year. The first matter for your consideration is your proposed meeting schedule for calendar 2022. It reflects all the holidays which you've already approved. It does indicate, you know, again, the dates that you've already approved for purposes of a budget. I do want to point out once again that- I do want to point out once again that beginning on January twenty seventh in the afternoon, you'll be meeting as the Board of Review and Equalization and those sessions typically start at two PM and do it at four PM. And then after that, as required by law, you'll be meeting every Tuesday and Thursday at least through Thursday, February seventeenth. You do have to go sign, die, no later than the end of February. We have the twenty second and the twenty fourth set aside if necessary, again, as Board of Review and Equalization. In the past, they have not been needed. We are scheduling your, your budget hearings as they come in and they're, the outside agency budgets are due no later than five PM tomorrow and the internal budget requests are due no later than five PM the following Friday and they're, they're coming in pretty right early. We've already received some of the internal budget requests and it's hoped within the next two weeks I'll have your, your Excel spreadsheet with revenue projections as well as the total requests that we've received. So other than that, it's pretty straightforward unless you have any, any questions.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Davis? Entertaining motion to approve this county council meeting schedule for 2022.
To move.
Motion on the floor, a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Mr. Davis, the board assignments.
As you know, this past year was the first year of council person Gokenhauer's participation on the county council and there was some, some changes in board and commission assignments. Last January, I did provide you with the sheet that's in your agenda packet via email earlier this week, which indicates the board and committee name, what the 2021 council member assignment is, and then open the floor to any discussion that this council may have about any changes in board and commissions.
Just to correct you on this, Mr. Gokenhauer is the, the county council member on the Central Dispatch of Agribank Committee.
Okay.
You made that change earlier this year.
Well, I'm fine with those.
I'm okay with mine if everybody look, I mean, unless somebody wants to.
Well, I do have some modifications after speaking with Councilman Whitaker. He is going to assume my quarterly meetings, which will be the Criminal Justice Board, the Home Consortium, and the Region Seven Workforce Investment Board. Thank you for that.
Is that okay?
So which ones he picked again?
Region seven.
Region seven, Home Consortium, and Criminal Justice.
You just like all the board where you got to travel.
Yeah. They've all been virtual, other than Criminal Justice.
Criminal Justice is a good board set right here, so I'm okay with it. Any other changes? All right.
We'll get the letters out.
All right.
And then.
You need a motion on that?
Yes, sir, if you would please.
Entertain a motion to the Burke County Board of Assignments for 2022, I stated. Motion been made. Second, second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
And the last matter is just that there's a signup sheet, you don't have to take any action. And as you know, we used to do, council used to do appearances on W EPM and WRNR and EPM no longer has the talk show appearances, so in your packet is the list of the twelve dates for 2022 for the WRNR talk show. If you could sign up for that, is the, is the sheet going around?
Yeah.
Okay. And you don't have to take any form of action on that.
Yeah.
Well, wait a second. Yeah.
Yeah, we sit like Tim's always good for spot. We'll, we'll go.
All right. All right, we're next. We're back in session. The next one, uh, item on our agenda is Tracy Gillums, uh, grant administrator acceptance of WB C O S S, COSAP, I guess, uh, grant award. I'm sorry. Please.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, please.
Oh, um, um, there is a resolution for acceptance of the West Virginia Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Abuse Program Grant, or otherwise known as COSAP. We had originally applied for a hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars with a match of fifty-four, four oh two, and we were awarded sixty thousand with a, um, match of twenty-two thousand, sixty-four dollars. It originally would have paid for two peer coaches for twenty-one months, and it will currently pay for one current full-time peer coach for twenty-one months.
This is state grant?
Yeah.
All right.
It, it says in theory that there's a grant, there's a match, but we're already matching that.
Yeah.
Right. I just, I just want to make sure the council's not confused.
Okay.
It's, it's.
That's daily.
It's actually gonna, it's gonna fund one of our peer recovery coaches that are, it's already in place. So we're not adding, unlike previous times Tim's been here. Um, we're not adding people in, in, there's no additional match money, but they actually found this money to pay for the current peer recovery coach. So another, just another grant funded position.
So you mean Tim's actually in front of us not wanting to grow again?
Well, it's early, not this conversation.
Day's not over, Dan. Still early.
Anytime we talk about a match, I want to make sure that they understand it's not a match match.
Okay. All right. Um, I guess, any further discussion with Tim or Tracy on this one? All right, entertain a motion to approve the, uh, advocate, or approve the.
Acceptance.
Yes.
So moved for the resolution.
All right. Motion been made. Second, any discussion? If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
The next is for an acceptance. Um, it will be, we have to accept it online, uh, or electronically. It is for the fiscal year twenty-one Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Abuse Site-Based Grant Program. This is a federal grant. We applied for nine hundred thousand. We received nine hundred thousand. This funds two new full-time case managers, one new full-time peer recovery coach, one social worker full-time through a sub, um, award through Martinsburg Initiative, and the social worker will be in the schools. It continues to fund Project Aware for year two and three of this three-year grant, and it pays for, um, one Surface Pro laptop with cellular connectivity and four desktop computers. It also pays for two required, um, training to the BJA conference in year two and three.
Has this been worked out for more education?
Mm-hmm. It, this one, this isn't fair. Yeah.
This is one I understand you was pretty excited about, Tim. Huh?
this one before we even applied, but just kind of refresh them a little bit, what it will do.
It'll allow, it'll allow us to, right now, we're, we're kind of teetering on capacity as far as, right now, we're teetering on capacity as far as staff is concerned, and instead of me coming to have to ask the council to fund additional staff for us to continue to, uh, to grow, the, this grant covers, will cover us for a while. Two case managers, therapist, peer recovery coach, that's a beautiful thing. This grant's gonna cover. We can, we can decrease our, our client capacity by sixty. With this grant, so it's, I'm very pleased, very happy about it.
I would take after like two, uh, three forty?
Yeah, roughly.
Yeah. Okay.
And there's no match. This is a hundred percent, just again, you know, it's one of the things we try to emphasize there is a match with this grant, it's providing a hundred percent funding for free.
And I guess, Tim, the, the thing that we always talk about, I mean, we don't want to grow the government, but at the same time, we always see success. You're still seeing the same success percentages in the rates?
Yes. I've been, I've been working on, I'm gonna give you a lot of information when I come to do my, my, uh, budget request for next year. Got a lot of information to share with you.
Okay.
Yes, we're still really good.
What about the homeless population and stuff that, that, you know, some of us get emails about, which is always a concern, and I always tell your quick response team, I'm gonna start walking out nighttime, the one thing to touch people and find out how they got there and what, what they need, need to help at a certain level, um, to get back on their feet, but, um, how's, how's that going? How's it, how are we reaching, because I just had an email, somebody complaining about people, um, and actually, you know, it shouldn't be somewhat, something that we're complaining about, it should be something that we would try to get the necessary help if the, if, if help would help them.
It, it's, it's almost hard for me, I, I think that most of the people in our area who are truly homeless, for no fault of their own, or mentally ill, um, and, uh, we don't have really any programs that target mentally ill living in the community here in Berkeley County. I mean, if you go up to Washington County, Maryland, there are three or four different, uh, agencies that, that hire case managers that actually go out into the community on a daily basis, they have small caseloads, and that their mission is to keep these people housed, to keep them out of prison, make sure they're taking their medications, um, you know, and Berkeley County really doesn't have that, there's this program called ACT, Assertive Community Treatment. My understanding is that East Ridge, there was talks of them starting a program like that some years back, but it never, never got going. There's really nothing like that in our area. The mentally ill are expected to show up on their own to East Ridge, and, and they're not, they, they can't, they don't have the ability to do that. Um, so programs that hire staff that go out into the community and assist these people is really necessary. We don't do that at the day reports.
No, I know that. Um. I'm just trying to find out if there's, if there's something that we need to call meeting and get some meeting in their minds, I mean, naturally, the hospital should be involved in that, because that's what we're talking about. Most of the people probably aren't on the medication.
No, no, now, people who are not mentally ill, who are homeless, there's not a great excuse for that, because there's so many things that they can do.
Right.
Um, to, to, to get on their feet. Those that are not mentally ill are kind of living that way by choice.
Right.
Mentally ill, though, they need help, and, and the help really just isn't available here in Berkeley County as far as I know.
All right, all right, thank you.
Tim, the social worker through Martinsburg Initiative, employee there, employee there.
It'll be, it'll be their employee, they'll, they'll be invoicing.
So they'll invoice us?
Yep, yep, and we have, we have a good relationship with, with the social workers in the schools now, we've been getting more and more referrals for the new juvenile, juvenile program from them, um, you know, the, the needs outweigh the, uh, the abilities still. This is what it is, so this is one more social worker that'll be, that'll be in the schools that they can hire, that's a good thing.
Mr. President, you may mention that, uh, the homeless and, and Tim, you talked about the mental, uh, portion of this, um, the rescue mission has some very caring people that come in there to assist Cosby Davis with the Good Samaritan Health, she's retired nurse, and Dr. Dressler, uh, his, his, they come to the mission regularly, weekly actually, to try and help them stay, get healthy, stay healthy, get their meds, stay on their meds, all those type of things, so if you put their group together, please reach out, they're already doing some, but you have to come there basically to get it, they're not out in the field.
Well, um, Anthony, I want to ask you, if you have time, you and Jeff, to try to put together a meeting on something like that, you know, the players that would be involved and, and, you know, um, just to try to see what we can do.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. All right, to go back, um, I guess we still need to have a motion to the, to approve, to accept the two thousand twenty-one BJA, uh, physical year, physical year twenty-one Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Abuse Site-Based Program Grant. That's a mouthful.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the phone, we have a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries, and thank you both for all your hard work. Good morning, Sheriff, you, everybody here, you expecting, or you still waiting on something?
We're all good, sir.
All right, good to see you. Um, next on our agenda is Sheriff Nathan Harmon, Deputy of the Year Award, two thousand twenty-one year review and grant spending selection advisement, advisement, I'm sorry. It's always good to see you, Sheriff.
Good to see you, Neil.
And we always like to see you at the podium rather than in the rearview mirror.
Those can be rather informed.
Yeah, I guess, I got, I've got two options, either I'm in the vehicle behind you, or I'm in the backseat.
Which side is it, take a ride in the backseat, this is for him. Don't want to call.
Um. All right, we're not on play, we have. Um, again, thank you for allowing me to come here and do this presentation, especially, uh, the Deputy of Year Award, it's, uh, it's near and dear to my heart, and, um, coming into the office, I felt something was missing, and that was the recognition of the service of our employees' hard work. We decided an awards ceremony and banquet were vital to our men and women, so as to show that appreciation and recognition for all their hard work. On December third, we recognize those that go above and beyond their call for duty, those that implement a level of passion and tenacity that leaves no stone unturned, and a work ethic that produces far above standard results. All the winners were nominated by their peers and leadership from their respective offices. We awarded eleven letters of commendation, uh, for acts ranging from consistent professional work ethic and productivity to those displaying a level of compassion for those who needed it the most in various situations. We then moved to announce the Deputy of the Year Award. This, this was not an award simply given, but respectfully earned and nominated again by the winner's fellow men and women deputies. Winner of the two thousand twenty-one Deputy of the Year Award was awarded to Deputy Chris Marson. We put together a little video. Now, Chris thought that this was a recruitment video, he had no idea that this is actually for him. That's just a small video with, with Chris in there, and as you can see on the video how much he, and, and that's just a very quick snapshot of what he contributes to the department as a whole, aside from his daily duties, you saw the kids in there, uh, he does multiple tours, he's a canine handler, he's part of the SWAT team, he, um, is also part of the base team as well as the dive team, the man is rather busy if you consider all the training that encompasses on those, uh, special teams. But he's also a father, and he's a thirteen-year veteran of the Berkeley County Sheriff's Department, and as well as an actual Army veteran. Chris has a passion for law enforcement that rallies his fellow deputies and encourages productivity, he has a competitive mindset with a God-given natural ability in roadside investigation. He is careful, meticulous, yet compassionate about his work, both with his fellow deputies and with his interactions with the citizens in the course of his daily duties. I do not have enough time here to cover all the good things Chris has done, nor the character that he possesses and skill sets he brings to his service, to his county and the citizens of this county, so in short, Chris truly is an all-encompassing deputy, and one in which department leadership everywhere strive to achieve and possess within their ranks, and Berkeley County is truly blessed to have him working with us. At this time, I would appreciate if I could present again the Deputy of the Year Award for the commission, and have the commission stand beside him as we take a picture with him and his award. Unfortunately, we wanted his, uh, canine Brahm with him, but the canine Brahm is a little anxious, and, uh, so he's, he's in the vehicle right now, so.
He's ready to go to work.
If you, if you all would, uh, appreciate.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Chris Marson and Mackenzie, his spouse, as they come up, I'd love for you all to join us as we present this award to him again. This was the award presented to Deputy Chris Marson. It is in honor of Scott Myers, who encompasses the same characteristics as I just mentioned to you, uh, about Deputy Marson. Uh, so for this year, this year alone, it was dedicated to Scott Myers and his, uh, climbing commitment as a deputy to the Berkeley County Sheriff's Department. And of course, uh, you know, I know that the, our, our folks take these plaques home with them, but I wanted something also at the department to be on display permanently, uh, at, at least as long as I have office, to also show the folks that visit there, uh, that we recognize our deputies' hard work and their commitment to this county, and we also had a crystal, um, made specifically, uh, for the department with an original photo, um, from a deputy presenting a flag that has a officer engraved inside this, the crystal, walking a young child. And this is the crystal that will be on display at the office.
Very nice, very, very nice.
And if you could see, Jack's gonna love me for this one, or if you can see, if you put a light underneath of it.
Right.
How it'll actually.
So Jack set, now let's get you, get you a light to put underneath the light table?
Uh-huh. Like Jack works for that one. So if you, if you want more time, uh, we can.
Yeah.
Cover down here.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a break here in a second, give us, give us a couple minutes, but, um, I just wanted to reach out to you, Chris and your wife, um, you know, um, I get emotional about this stuff anymore, I'm sorry, uh, but Chris, it, it, there's not enough words to say thank you. You know, we love our men in uniform, you know, Berkeley County, this council will support you guys, it's been a pleasure working with you guys over the last couple of years, you know, we came a long way, and, and, uh, and it's, 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 it's my honor to do that, um, and, uh, you know, men, a lot of times we go out, or the spouse goes out and works hard, but it's, it, it comes with a lot of lost family time too, so ma'am, I'd like to, you know, give you my, my blessing and say thank you to you as well, and, you know, because we can't do the things if our wives don't let them, let us, right? So, uh, but, um, it's an honor, and, and, and I hope you take that sincerely from me this, in, in this council to say thank you for what you do, and thanks for going the extra mile. Yeah, anybody else?
I, I mean, like Doug said, you know, much appreciate anybody that's willing to go the extra mile all the time, and I know there's many people on the force that do that, but somebody, you know, somebody's always gonna stand out, and thanks, thanks for what you do, and thanks for your support, Doug's a hundred percent right, you know, I, I spend a lot of time doing things, and, and that's because I have a, a great woman at home that supports me in doing what I did, so.
I'm just impressed by you going out and, and intermingling, for lack of a better term, with the younger set, to show them, yeah, hey, I'm a cop, I'm here for you, and anything you can do to help, and that, yeah, that probably supports as much as anything that you ever do in the future.
They are. They are. They say a man never stoop so low, then he went. We're getting old, Timmy.
To when you reach the hand of a child.
Thank you.
As you can tell, we love kids.
Congratulations, you, for that award, and, um, I know you'll find it to be very special, but to be chosen by your peers would, to me, mean that much more. Please know that we have you. Your, your department, uh, with the help of this council, has come a long way, and I've seen it, because I thought that, that when I got elected, I thought I can help fix this, this offset between the council and the sheriff's office, because I wore a uniform for a long time very proudly. I didn't have to, because you had a leader in your organization that came here and set the stage, and this council was receptive to those changes, and, and we've built a tremendous relationship, we're getting you more help on the street, we're gonna make your job safer, and hopefully your wife won't have to worry so much about what goes on when, when you're out, she doesn't see what's going on, and a lot of times, they don't need to see what's going on, to do your job. Thank you for what you do, um, thank your, thank your staff and the men that you work with, you have a great job.
I'll do the job.
Yeah. Sheriff, I'd like to echo what, uh, Councilman Dokeneir said, um, I've been here now for eleven years, and, uh, um, we always have to strive to improve our relationship with all elected officials, and, um, we've been very successful at that, um, uh, but more so since you took off. But more so since you took office. And I'd like to thank you for that publicly. I'd like to thank you and your whole team, all the deputies and administrative staff. We're just, I think we're working very, very well together. I'm very happy and look to continue that success. And it resonates through the county, which you all do. All right, at this time, we'll take a break, not unless you all want to say something more. Or anybody in the audience want to say anything?
You know, being speeches.
All right, we'll take a break for photos. We're back in session. Sheriff, you have anything to say? I seen you come back up, sir.
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, when we first took office, Tom and I, you know, I was praying to God that we would be able to establish the relationships needed to move the department in directions that we needed it to move. And I can tell you that we are extremely grateful with the relationships we've been able to establish, not only with you all, but with other agencies as well. But with those relationships, you need trust. And you can't necessarily have one without the other and have movement forward. You sure, you can have a relationship, but, you know, at what level is that relationship? When does it become productive? So you have to have trust. And I just want to thank the Commission for having trust in us, to invest in us in several different areas. And I feel obligated to come before you and at least give you a rundown of a year-end review in regards to our efforts and the fruits of those labors. So in short, you know, what return on your investment did you get? So I want to start off by talking about our... And I'm gonna paraphrase a lot of this, because I know I don't have a lot of time. You guys got a busy schedule. So for the staffing, our civilian staff is complete, full, at the department, as well as our animal control staff, our tax office staff. We have hired five pre-certified officers. Again, due to your blessing and agreeance with us to do so, that was a big game changer. When you talk about folks, the dynamics of our office and folks that we have to either dismiss for various reasons, or folks that retire, or folks that move on to federal jobs or something else. So I know Tom and I, when we came in, there were seven vacancies, roughly. Now that there's only one. We are looking at filling those positions. We've got a lot of attention from several pre-certified officers knocking on our doors. We can't... It's a good problem to have to turn folks away. And that's where we're at with this staffing, so we're definitely blessed with that. Welcome Walker, Connor Henderson, and Jenkins were the five pre-certified officers that you received for this county. Folks that we can put on the road effectively in three months' time versus a year turnaround when you talk about a new applicant that's got to go through the rigors of the academy, the FPO program, and checking all the boxes that need to check before you put them on the road and they become effective. So...
This is something new to us. We've never had more applicants than positioned, so congratulations.
Yes, thank you, sir. It's definitely a huge compliment to all of our efforts together. And like I said, you know, you look left and right at me. There's people standing there that have helped me along the way, and I could never have done this without you all and the folks that... The resources that we have here that's pulled together to make this happen, civil service included. We've got a productive, forward-thinking civil service board, as well as a council, and it's come together better than anything I could have ever imagined. And I thank you for that. We've established partnerships with over 12 additional organizations, ranging from the Department of Homeland Security, the Department of Defense, to the Day Report Center, and TIM Spokes initiated the LEAD program to help save financially the judicial process and hopes that we can help those that suffer from addiction. And if we can have an avenue that prevents them from having to go through the legal system, then we want to do that. And the Governor's Highway Safety Program, the Home Compliance Office, the Regional Organized Crime Information Center, just to name a few. We've participated in nine charity events, ranging from Horses with Arts, Apple Harvest Festival, Santa with a Badge, Elmwood Christmas Parade, the Children's Home Society, as well as No Shave for the Break. If you saw, your deputies are a little rough-looking there in November, you know why. We've hosted eight benefit events, ranging from First Responder Burger Burn, the DEA Drug Takeback Day, which netted over 284 pounds of turned-in prescription unused drugs. We've attended six events, ranging from 167th Air National Guard Full-Scale Emergency Drills to the First Annual Cruiser Competition, which I will add that Deputy Merson won People's Choice Award up there, as well as the Cruiser, the Unmarked Cruiser Award. Community Days, deputies and the reserves participated in over seven of those, ranging from the Smile Initiative Back-to-School Bash, the Epic Block Party, the School Safety Night, and Blackout Veterans Day Celebration, as well as participated in multiple school demonstrations with the Canines, as well as, you've seen on the video, several tours with our younger generation through the department. We've conducted over 34 different training evolutions at the department, some in which repeat themselves. For example, the law enforcement-approved emergency driving tools that I was a big advocate of. We've literally got half of our department through that. We're looking at putting the other half through this year. Almost positive, you'll see the dividends of that come to fruition here later this year, if not sooner, in regards to reduction of accidents, or at the very least, a reduction in injury and damage to a person, a deputy, or a vehicle. So minimizing those things. We've had training courses from Street Cop, Ivory Tower, and Leadership, de-escalation, use of force. We had the first-ever annual in-service training at our department that involved a few federal agencies, as well as the County Prosecuting Attorney's Office, talking about case studies, improvements in report writing and investigation, as well as improvement on crime scene processing. We've partnered with places like Shadowhawk and Peacemaker to introduce Level 1, Level 2 tactics to our deputies, which I'm proud to say that all of our deputies have went through Level 1 tactics, which improve not only officer safety, but also polish up on their skill sets if they have to go through an active crime, such as a break-in and entering, or something of that nature. We've also, through that training, played catch-up and got where we needed to be in regards to our firearms program, our less-than-lethal program involving the tasers. There was folks that were flirting with expired instructor certifications, those who fell out of certifications, but now I'm proud to say that we are now where we need to be with them. The equipment that we've purchased, we've purchased over 18 large... No one's... Large and small pieces of equipment that I can't go into too much detail, but I can tell you that we are definitely moving into 21st century with camera systems, roadside assistance, and officer safety items, such as the Guardian Angel, which makes the deputy a little bit more visible there on the side of the road with strobe lights and flashlights and stuff that attach to the uniform. We've gotten tent meters, SWAT equipment, to optics, to a replenishment of ROC spray. Dive suits, which were very much needed for those. And what you see me wearing for that, I'd say would be a very big ticket item. But though it doesn't appear so on the outside, I can definitely tell you that what I'm wearing here is eight pounds less than what they were wearing. And if you think about wearing eight pounds on your hips for 10 to 12-hour shift, and then the damage that could do on your lower back over the course of years and whatnot, we are also in hopes that we'll see those dividends come two, three years down the road when we look at work accomplishment and whatnot. Everything is now equally distributed and accessible. And if you think about the Class A uniform, the dress uniform, this was the work uniform. And I had issues with that, because you not only had to buy the shiny little trinkets to put it on there, but I had deputies walking around without name tags and stuff, because they would fall off, they would break. I would have tethered and battered badges and patches, if you will. These patches that you see on my sleeve and on my chest are PVC. They will last for as long as we want them to last. You will not see them frayed, torn, or ripped, or dirty. The vest that you see me wearing, the previous vest that had a Class A look on the outside of them... These deputies work long shifts. They stow them, sometimes in their trunk and in other places. When they get... other places when they get battered, tethered, and dirty and whatnot. And you gotta constantly wash them. You know, you spray a couple squirts of whatever cleaner you want on here, and then wipe it off, this still looks brand-new. And you don't see that effect of that battered, worn, war-torn equipment on a deputy anymore. This is a workable, breathable, practical uniform now. And I'm proud to say that the feedback that we've gotten from our men and women deputies has been nothing but positive. So a very good, working uniform that we have now. We've been awarded over $708,000 in grants, and again, I cannot compliment Tracy Williams and April Holbrooke and the Grant Office for the county for being such a significant resource to our department in terms of the COPS grant and receiving the funds necessary to get us where we need. So I was very, I'm very appreciative of Tracy and April's efforts in that office. We've applied for several more, five, and didn't get those, but that doesn't stop there. I'll ask again, you know, and we'll work harder the next time. For 2021, the numbers for your department in total department arrests is 835. SWAT deployed 27 times, and I can assure you that that deployment comes with, you know, an assessment that's done. You know about the Fairfax incident, the issues that arose out of that, and the after-action brief identified several areas where we could improve on equipment that I'm about ready to talk to you about, what grants and whatnot here to come. But they are a very active team, and so much so, we're, you've literally got, well, I don't know of an incident where they were actually fully deployed the year prior, but they are now actively being used by the task force for the county, as well as the department. Your Criminal Investigation Division has worked 170 bases and have closed successfully 152. Your K-9 deployments since September of 2021, whereas we've received donations and contributions to beef up our K-9 program to where we can now officially call it a K-9 Division, where the county now has five dogs, and those dogs are actively working. You saw one of, well, you saw one of the handlers earlier this morning, and they have had 235 deployments since September 1st of this year, of 2021, I mean, and they have seized over $84,395 in suspected drug currency. The accidents worked by your department was over 5,293, which includes property damage, 131 DUIs, 986 traffic citations, 12 dive team call-outs. Your financial seizures for the year of 2021, which is an increase of 372% from the year prior, was $200,125.35.
372% increase, great.
As a matter of fact, in 2020, there was only $42,000 seized, just to give you a number. So yes, a 372% increase. Actual forfeited money was $104,897 in 2021, which is a 246% increase from the year prior, which was only $30,000. Your ACE Team, which was implemented in April, consists of four individuals, which I'm very much hopeful to expand in the future, has seized over $90,701 in US currency and drug cash, drug money, and has 222 arrests. That is the department numbers as a whole, as brief as I can make them, without going into too much detail, but I wanted to make sure that I mentioned that to the council because I feel it necessary for you to at least have, at a minimum, a snapshot of what it is that you've invested in and have trusted us in to do, and this is what that result is. Again, of course, we're continuously moving forward, and I look for those numbers to not just stay the same, but get better over the years as we invest in additional technology. Your All Traffic Solution Devices that you assisted with me in, to name a few, has had a 78% effective rate in slowing folks down upon seeing a disaster. I've had multiple people call me and ask me if their picture was just taken. So, you know, I admire the gamut of ideas that run through a person's mind when they actually, you know, their mind is somewhere else and they don't know they're speeding, but then they're advised that they're speeding and they slow down. So you have a 78% effective rate, not only on the interstate, but on your secondary roads of the county, too. Not really dive too much into the secondary roads as much as we have the interstate, but those machines are worth their weight in gold. Reports that we've received from those machines are very detailed, so much so that the Governor's Highway Safety Program did a presentation up here for them, and they want to invest in them and put a few more in regions. We are definitely together setting the bar for other counties to follow, and I greatly appreciate that from you.
Probably could use about a half a dozen more of those.
Probably could, probably could. But, you know, coupled with the relationship we have with WVU Medicine, the ID1 Traffic Safety Initiative, we've gotten a lot of traction with that initiative to slow folks down and make improvements on the interstate. That initiative, which I plan on making a trip to Charleston here soon, will require legislative action, as well as Department Transportation Support, which we've received already, for additional signage, commercial vehicle restrictions, lane restriction, and ideas on how to mitigate the traffic that gets diverted to our secondary and tertiary roads when an ID1 gets impacted. I think everybody has heard of the 24, 26-hour issue, if you've ever traveled to DC, I guess, on I-95, I believe. People almost, well, people did have to spend the night, you know, on the interstate, so obviously, we don't want that to ever happen here, but it is a huge impact to this county when something happens on a interstate that has an average daily travel rate of 79,000-plus vehicles in a day. And when that traffic is diverted to our secondary roads, it's a huge burden to this county. We've gotten some very, very good progress with that, and I have a presentation that I'll present for probably about the eighth time here soon to be working with some planning here. But with that said, that is your snapshot of the department's progress moving forward. If I don't, if there's no other questions, I did put on the agenda the grant spending selection advisement that I could go through. I have no other questions.
I'd just like to say, as was talked about earlier, Sheriff, I mean, for what you and your department has accomplished in a year, I would have thought would have took at least a full turn. So congratulations.
We did, too. To be honest with you, it's mind-blowing, as Tom and I sit back and look at what's been done, but, you know, as I said earlier, it would never have been done without the forward-thinking, open-mindedness, and the trust and relationships that's been established since day one. I still remember the very first weekend that I had office, and we had that laddie shooting, so it was, you know, so whenever I said we hit the ground running, we really did.
And you handled that very, very professionally, very well, you know?
The bar's been set.
Yes, kind of like, what did I get myself into? Appreciate everything, and that you and Tom and the whole department has done.
Thank you. So my understanding is that, you know, we apply for these grants, and we need to express what we've, our intentions on spending this grant funding are, as you've provided in the read-ahead. We were approved to receive $75,000 in Homeland Security Grant for fiscal year '20 for SWAT equipment. The items the department has selected for purchase and requested the advisement on what fund process should be used for payment on these grant items. The items we've listed was the ballistic helmets and hearing protection. This is crucial, as I brought up the Fairfax incident earlier. If it were our team, which it was not, it was the State Police SRT team that was actually deployed eventually, but I noticed that our team did not have helmet communication and had to do everything by hand-arm signals or verbal demands, which is a severe gap in an efficient operation of the team, especially when you're in a dynamic situation clearing a building. Not to mention the large manufacturing buildings that we are seeing here in this county, it is crucial to be able to communicate with one another, especially if you don't have line of sight or the team gets split up. So that RFP closed on December 15th. The lowest bid was by $8,344, and this would conclude our purchase of equipment for ballistic helmets and the hearing protection, which was $43,540 from Arms and Lovers Incorporated.
But can I say something real quick?
Sure.
One of the things that we found on the fire side at Macy's was, once you got inside those buildings, the radios didn't work because of all the metal.
Yeah, and we actually worked with Macy's and Motorola to try to get some repeaters in that building.
Inside the building, so we may want to, just to give you, you may want to check those out, make sure, see if we can, because I think after that, we actually made it to where, I don't know whether it was a request or mandated, that they had to have repeaters in them big buildings because of that.
Turn the building code.
Huh?
Turn the building code.
Right, well, so we did do it, we mandated it. So just check it out, don't want to get in a one-of-a-situation where you need to use it, and it don't work.
Yes, sir. Now, that's, standing behind me is the Assistant Commander for our SWAT team, Chad Jones, and I would like to add that he was honorable mention for the Deputy of the Year, worked for all his efforts.
Congratulations, Chad.
Yeah, he's been phenomenal with productivity and movement forward and improvement of this team, and you're talking about a 12-man team, and identifying the needs of the team, you know, ahead of time versus playing catch-up with these things. So now, I'm not gonna lie to you, he's presented some high-ticket items at times, but, you know, nevertheless, he's always presented a practical presentation to me, and, you know, we've had multiple discussions, and he's very familiar with that. They're always seeking training venues, whether it be a walkthrough at a school, or whether it be at Macy's, so I'm sure, I'm sure we'll schedule that with Macy's and test that here soon enough. So thank you for reminding me about that. Rifle plates, which came from 1042 Tactical LLC, it was the lowest of three quotes at Rifle plates in total were $10,007. These, again, are for the SWAT team as well. You know, I'm fortunate that I have to stand here and tell you this, but as we evolve, so does the mindset of those that want to do us harm, whether it be a high-powered rifle or like, we've got to be prepared for those things. A DEFTEC Wallbanger System at $3,995, it's a less lethal option, or it came from Less Lethal Options LLC, which was a sole source. Chad can talk a little bit more in detail about that specific system, but that is a SWAT team item that we've identified that we needed. Four pole camera kit, obviously, investment into technology that's out there for us, whether it be drones or camera systems, that can add a layer or more to officer safety, and being able to identify and assess the situation before entry is vital, and that is the reason for this request, at $9,541.17 from Federal Resources, and it was the lowest of three quotes by $513.27. An armor bag, obviously, you get this equipment, and you gotta tote it around, you know, OP Tactical came out as the lowest bid of four quotes at a, by $101.22. Armor Shield, which is very similar to what you saw Deputy Merson holding in the video, is another item provided by Blue Ridge Armor LLC, sole source, because it has a unique advantage to it that Chad can talk to you if you have questions about that as well. And then an additional gear bag from Sandpiper of California, which was the lowest of three quotes by $795.38. Now, I will say that, you know, when you have a ballistic helmet, and you might be wondering, well, you just mentioned two different gear bags, well, when you invest in a helmet that has integrated comm systems in it, that will have a bag in it specifically, so protecting that equipment. So that's why you see that there. But if there's no questions, the total of our grant requests totaled to $74,735.83, which I believe is, if not, but we didn't use the entirety of the grant funding, but I think it was $500 or something, somewhere around there. I mean, we came close, short of handing you an IOU or whatever grant funding it was, I mean, we tried to use every dollar, and so that's the request that we put forward. I will bring up the Fairfax incident again, the State Police was the team that entered there. You've heard me mention the call-outs for the SWAT team, for your Brooklyn County SWAT team in '27, more than any year, and if you combine the past four years, this team's been called out more than any of those years combined. They're being used quite a bit, they're relied on very heavily, and the investment in keeping them more safe and moving the team into, you know, the 21st century, I think, is something that we owe them, and this is a huge step for that, and I'm glad that Tracy and her office were able to provide us the funding so we could do this. That's my presentation, unless someone has questions specifically about a piece of equipment that maybe checked and helped me answer, but otherwise, that's the grant.
I'd be afraid to ask you questions, I might ask the wrong question, you tell me, I can't tell you that. So, but thanks for the rundown, that means a lot to be able to know that, you know, all the hard work that everybody's doing that's being well-spent and respected. So it just, again, thank you for everything you're doing.
I appreciate it.
Sheriff, the read-ahead that you provided dated December 22nd only totaled $73,011.84. It did not include the most.
The last bag.
The last bag.
I think that was an add-on.
If it was added on, if everyone else could put in the poll, there was a little bit I couldn't have. So I should have amended one to three, five people.
Yeah, if you could provide that to us, what we typically do, Sheriff, is you will pay for this equipment, working with Tracy Moreforming, out of your 700 budget, how supplies and materials, and what I will do is take the total amount of your expenditures, because we like to keep cost of all, we keep track of all this by Cost Center, so this is actually part of the Cost Center for law enforcement. We'll take the $74,000 and change, and we'll move it from contingency into your Supplies and Materials account, then when we get the reimbursement, I'll put it back in contingency.
Yes, sir.
If that's agreed.
You don't have to wait on your money.
Typically how we do it.
That was good, I'm sure.
So if, once the council approves this, then you can go on and order it, work with Tracy.
Sheriff, I want to say thank you for what you've done with all of your, all of your staff and your deputies, and I think you've done a very good job of protecting our community. I, you know, I think that the majority of the population here is appreciative of what you've done. I know that this council is, and you've done, you've done a really good job.
Thanks, Sheriff.
I do. I do appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Yeah. I don't hear anything bad about you, that's for sure. Everybody's praising you, and I jump right in.
Well, it's not a, it's not a contest, but how do you feel that our county ranks with the other fifty-five counties?
Well, I can tell you from a public safety standpoint, what we're doing, we're seeing other agencies fall off suit. They like what we're doing. It's very attractive in regards to how they're seeing that we're taken care of, that the investment that we've done, and that's, again, the reason why we have so many pre-certified officers, applicants, you know, they see it. I think the transparency that the department provides is something that has not been done at the level that's being done, and that's being seen. And I, I hold no qualms to ensuring the public knows exactly what these officers are doing, and I think it has worked very well for us, and I see other agencies mirroring it. And it's a, that's a compliment in and by itself, especially when it's agencies four or five states away. They're, they're giving you, they're shaking your hand, they're, they're commending the efforts that are going on here. Your ACE team is a model that I've seen other agencies employ after we've deployed ours. So it's, you know, I'm not saying they're top accounting, but it's, it's great. It's good to be the tip of the spear. And I meant it when I said that the county can be the example for the remainder of the counties and the state to follow, and I see that happen. And it's not to my credit, it's to our, together, our relationships, it's the credit to this county and the administration, so that's what I see.
Right. It always takes a leader to have the attitude that you can always find a way to get something done. It's very easy to say, no, we can't do it, and no, this can't be done, and it's never happened or whatever, but, but a leader that has an attitude of being able to look until he finds a, a way to be successful at what he wants to do is, is something that you've been doing, and, and that unfortunately, not everybody has that ability.
That's great. All right, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Wishing you the best for 2022.
Yeah. Happy New Year.
Yes, sir.
For more positive things to come. Thank you, guys.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right. At this time, I'd like to have a motion to go into executive session for legal and real estate there.
Real estate and personnel.
Real estate and personnel.
Got it.
So we're in executive session.
We're out of executive session, back in session, won't be any action taken. So Mr. Barnhart, if you would do the honors.
Well, Mr. President, I'm Mr. Newly elected President, I really appreciate it and I move to recess.
Thank you, sir, we are recessed.